...to the flag of the United States of America. And the regi- for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Commissioner Palmer?
Yep, I'm here.
Commissioner Parham?
Present.
Chair Zinda?
Here. Let's make sure all our microphones are on this time. Appreciate that. Are we going to have a staff report before non-agenda or?
We don't do that. We wait until we're ready.
Okay. All right. Is there any non-agenda public comment that anyone cares to make about something that does not appear on the irregular agenda tonight? Are there any conflicts of interest among us? Then we go on to the regular agenda. Would that be your staff report at this point? Okay.
Oh, we're going to postpone it.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
The special counsel, Ryan Reed, is Skyping in. So we're trying to...
He's connecting in by computer remotely, and he's not connected yet. But I could actually just... What's that?
Anytime now, in other words.
I could just begin by saying that this hearing, we had this hearing before last month, as you all know. Since that hearing, the agreement was slightly altered, and we had a hearing at the city council, a public hearing. But according to pursuant to government codes, section 65857, legisla- this legislative body may approve, modify, or disapprove the recommendation of the planning commission, provided that any modifications of the proposed ordinance or amendment by the legislative body that wasn't previously considered by the planning commission during its hearing shall first be referred back to the planning commission before it can finally be approved. So the planning, the city council did hear their, conduct the public hearing, but no vote was taken because the document had been changed slightly. I'm not really quite sure what the changes were. It was discussed by the applicant and the council. I think what we're going to have to do is have the modifications discussed. Have you read the latest?
I'm assuming the modifications are all in blue.
You, you got it.
Which was very helpful. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So that's all I really know about this hearing. This is my first experience having to come back to the planning commission after running an ordinance through to the council and then coming back. So it's kind of odd for me, but I do know the government code section always says that. And I always cite this code when we are at the city council for an ordinance adoption. Never have I had to bring it back, though. So really, most of the questions, I think, tonight, since we've already been through the staff report for the development agreement, we've talked about what, why a development agreement, how they function, what's supposed to be in them. The city attorney, outside council, discussed the terms of the agreement, so I don't have to go through that again tonight. What we're really looking at is what the modifications are. And essentially, that's kind of more of a realm that this outside council would be best to handle. So we are kind of waiting for him to... There he is. So yeah, he would be best to describe what our... Hello, Ryan. What our procedures are. And I think even some council commissioners have, have questions about, you know, the vote and whatnot. So anyway, I'd like to just turn it over to either Ryan Reed to discuss this process once again, to you, and then probably, most likely, the applicant. So thank you, Ryan. If you can go ahead and...
Yeah. Thank you.
You all right?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes. So as Keith mentioned...
Yep.
The process here is a little bit different than, or really, it's a process that's provided for zoning ordinances, and as it says, a zoning...
You're breaking up. Is that... It's, I don't know. Try, try again, please. It was very choppy. Your vo- your, your audio is very choppy.
Can you hear me? Is it choppy still?
Hmm?
There's a delay.
It's, it must be, that must be. I'll try and get used to it.
If he mutes his side while he's talking, it may help.
Hmm?
Okay.
If he hits the mute button on his end...
I will mute my own. So raise your hand if you have any...
Boom.
Okay. Can you hear me? Just thumbs up.
That's better.
Great. So as Keith mentioned, this is a, the development agreement is an ordinance, a zoning ordinance in effect, although it is also a contract with the developer. So when there are changes that occur between the time the planning commission considers the development agreement or any ordinance at its public hearing, and when the city council hears that, we are required, under government code section 65857, to send back the modifications to what the planning commission looked at for consideration, with the planning commission reporting on those changes and making recommendation, updated recommendations, effectively. So that is what happened here. The developer heard comments and discussion at the last planning commission meeting, subsequently proposed some changes to the agreement. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to look at those modifications only. This is not a public hearing, per se, like the last one, because we are just looking at these modifications. And the government code section I just cited does not provide that it's a public, a regular hearing. So this will really be mostly, what I would recommend at least, is mostly questions for me. The applicant will participate as a member of the public, effectively. And then we, you know, if you really have any questions that I can't answer, that he needs to answer, then you can ask him. But the purpose of this is solely to look at the modify, the modify, I'm sorry, modifications to the development agreement from the last time we looked at this. There are a few modifications that I think are worth flagging. The first, which you've probably noticed, is the change in acreage that this development agreement covers. The original development agreement was 21.6 acres, and the developer mentioned in his, in the public hearing last time, that there was, he owned, or has an option to purchase an additional approximately 39 acres in that area, which he intends to use for accessory uses. So it would not include any primary cannabis use, like cultivation, nurseries, et cetera. Rather, this would be used for accessory purposes, including, you know, storage, parking, and the like. And the developer hoped to include this as part of the development agreement formally, after more consideration, because of the way that the, the state licensing process works, in that it requires that you have a site plan that covers all accessory uses as well. And he wanted to make sure he could continue to use that, except the other parcels for those accessory uses. So that was one major addition. In addition to reflect some slight changes to his, his potential options for purchasing some of those parcels, we have made it, made it, the effectiveness of the agreement slightly different. It is effective now on purchase of at least 75% of the property, which would be all 60 acres. The reason is the developer has an option, an option to purchase a portion, about one acre, or is working on an option to purchase about one acre of those, of these two parcels that total four acres. And so we want to make sure that the agreement can become effective before he, you know, when he is able to purchase one of those acres, not necessarily having to purchase all four acres. It gives the city and the developer more flexibility, but this agreement still will not become effective until he purchases a majority of the property. And, and I believe he stated before, but the majority of the property, 56 acres, I believe, is an all or nothing purchase deal. So it will effectively become, in the same way, become effective once he purchases that 56 acres. There is some slight other language changes, mostly legalese discussion, the notice to the developer when the city intend, if the city intends to terminate the agreement. This is standard language for these types of agreements. We give him 60 days' notice before the city is going to terminate. And then it also slightly changes the term of this agreement. So with that, you, you have the red line version of this. If you have any other thoughts, again, I, this, the purpose of this public, or the purpose of this meeting is really to look at the modifications, the red line, from the draft that you looked at last time. I can answer any questions. Otherwise, you can take comment from the public, and I'll be here. Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Are you asking a question? Of whom?
So on the term B, and it says, like, what you talked about, the 75%, doesn't ha- why is it not just 100%? Why was that added just at 75 and not say 100?
Sorry, to clarify. So procedurally, I'm muting, or I'm finding my own... To, to avoid feedback. So if there are any comments on my comments, please just, you know, wait until I'm done talking. I apologize. It's just a technical difficulty here. So the reason is, four of the acres we added are made up of two parcels, and those two parcels are two acres each. And the developer has, is in discussions with the property owner to purchase one of the acres of those, those four total. And so it is likely that he will not purchase all four acres. And so for flexibility's sake, we are saying that, that the agreement can become effective before, or without purchasing all four of those acres effectively.
Okay.
I think 100% should be... I don't agree with that, but...
This is, yeah. Well, you can, you can reflect that in your vote, but right now, we're here to just go over the amendments.
But we can ask questions, correct?
Not at this point.
After the, when it's all done?
Ryan, you can ask questions.
Ryan, right?
Yes.
Through, through, through the whole discussion?
Right now, it's open for questions to Ryan.
You can ask questions, please.
Okay.
That's how I took it.
So does anyone else have a question for Brian?
Questions to staff. Questions to staff.
Okay.
But I don't know anything else.
So where are we at this point? Are we going to go over all?
Does anybody else have any questions?
Wait a minute. Is this for the whole thing?
Yes.
No, what is discussed, right, so far?
The modifications. If you have questions on the modifications for Ryan, please, can we still have Ryan now?
Can we ask? Has he gotten to him? Just like it is when we do a regular staff report, you can ask staff questions. While he's staff right now.
He's staff.
Oh, okay. That's a good idea.
But usually, you go, you'll go over everything in detail first. You're not going to do that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Can we, can we ask questions on what happened, on the last meeting, too? Some wasn't answered. Simple one.
We're...
You're the attorney, you're correct. So when we, when all this gets passed, and there's not enough power in South Weed to do it, there is no power to do it, how much is the city and the people in the city liable to pay for their part of the power to put power into this thing? In other words, if we pass it, we have a liability to get, sell this man water and power?
We're not selling him power. Pacific Power is selling him power.
Who's going to put...
So water and power issues...
The water itself comes from City of Weed. I'm sorry, go ahead. I cheated. I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So water and power issues will be dealt with at the plan unit development stage, and the city will not permit, this does not entitle him to any particular size or type of development. The water and utility and other issues would be dealt with, and it would be surety that the, the developer could only develop property consistent with what the city can provide utility service to at the plan unit development stage. That would all be analyzed during the environmental review. That would all be analyzed during the plan unit development rezone, which will come back to the planning commission for review and recommendation, like any other ordinance. And no development could occur before those issues were addressed.
Thank you. I have another question. This one's on the term of the agreement, and it's at a period of 15 years unless a termination earlier, and then it, it's additional 10 years. So does that give Mr. Stracker, this company, 25 years to get this up and running full, or what? That's what I want. That's a lot of years for the plan that shows five years and...
Term is 15 years, and then automatic extension for an additional 10 years unless either party submits written notice to terminate the agreement after 15 years. And what that allows him to do is, it gives 15 years and then an additional term if the city doesn't terminate, to use the property for those purposes. So basically, the, the city will not change its laws to prohibit cannabis on this property during the term of that agreement. And the point of the development agreement, and development agreements generally, is to provide this type of consistency. And 15 to 30-year terms are relatively common in this sphere.
Well, is this also on B? It says city obligations, said developer vested in right to use or permit uses. Such rights vest approval, that the city, the developer gets the, the final say in this. This is on city obligations, I...
Sorry, the final say in what exactly?
Well, if you, do you have it in front of you? If you look under city obligations, I believe it's I. And it kind of goes down the zone, and such rights vested upon approval. I believe it, the way I'm seeing it, it gives the, the developer first choice on everything. He doesn't have to go back to the city.
Rights under this agreement vest at, after the approval and accreditation of the zoning amendment. And what this basically means is he has the right to use the property consistent with the zoning amendment, which would be the plan unit development rezone at, after that time. So we, once we pass the plan unit development rezone, then during the term of this agreement, and that's if, sorry, if we pass the plan unit development rezone, then during the remaining term of this agreement, we cannot take away his right to use the property consistent with what the city has approved. So the, basically, the city will, will be presented with an application for a rezone, which will better define the terms of this and scope of the physical development of this property. Once, if the city, after going to the planning commission and then to the city council approves that rezone, then that rezone is final for the term of this agreement, for the remaining term of this agreement. So if this, if the rezone happens in two years, then he will have a remaining 13 years before the city can terminate. Of course, if he doesn't comply with the obligations under this agreement, then the city can terminate earlier.
That's standard operation with most businesses?
Well, that, that's the...
Or is that just this particular...
It's standard for development agreements.
For a development agreement?
And often, you know, it is, it depends on, it's not uncommon for very large developments to use these as a way to ensure consistency while granting certain things to the city.
So it's the same as, into assignment, the right and obligations under this agreement runs with the land, therefore, developer shall have the full right, without city consent, to assign this agreement in connection with any sale, transfer? That's in assignment, and I guess it's number 11 now. Doesn't that kind of complete what was being said?
Yes, so development is typically run with the land, like use permits. So if the land is sold or transferred, then the new owner would have the same rights and obligations under the development agreement.
That's what we thought. But that just takes it away from, from the council or the city, then. I mean, if, if, I'm not saying he is, but if they decide, the developer decides to sell, they don't have to come to the city. He can sell it to whoever. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I was just, you know, I'm just saying, you have to watch out for the city's interests. Am I, am I correct in that?
Cliff Chang.
Well, whoever, I'm not putting any names, I'm just saying, it's a possibility. Or could you just sell it if there's nothing on it?
This is a standard provision for these types of agreements. In, I, I don't know, I don't, I can't speak for what's in the city's best interest. That's for you and the council to decide.
Well, I'm just putting it out there for the public and whoever else is listening to it, whether they agree or not. It's in writing. Best interest should be in for the city. Period. Most businesses that come in, there's a standard way they do operations. There's no fees that are, you can have this and pay six months. Again, I'm not pointing it, just overall. Most businesses that come in with a plan, they're going to take what's offered. These are the rules. These what, this is what you get when you come in to open up a new business. You don't get all this extra time. I understand Walmart, and I don't know this, they got X amount of years for the tax base. So to me, the same thing should go with anyone coming in here. You should follow the rules and not ask for other things. You have to follow the rules that every other business has to follow that wants to develop in this city, or in, or in the area. That's just my observation of what I'm reading and gathering and information that I talk to other business people.
Does anyone else have any comment about this?
So I had a question about the acreage changes. So I'm looking at the site map here that shows the Phase 1 and the Vista Drive commercial development area. Which part of, of that is affected by the, you know, how, how much of this site map consists of that 50 some odd acres?
Are you referring to the site map that is attached as, as part of exhibit C?
Yes.
So as I understand, that is the 21.6 acres alone. The developer wanted to include that as an example of the type of, of what the site plan might look like in the future. That is not being, that is not binding in any way to the city, of course, but that is solely the 21.6 acres.
So where does the rest of that acreage extend to? Does it go east, south? Or is this better, better question?
That might be a question the developer can answer in his comments today.
Okay. I'll wait till that point, then.
Reed can answer your question.
Okay.
Sure. So I apologize...
Introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Raymond Strack, 3038 Knight-Hawke Lane. I was under the impression that you guys were going to be receiving a broader parcel map showing where the addendum land is. It is what we're talking about, and you guys all know it because you've been down there. It's the eastern, it's between Blackbeet Drive and Highway. It's the frontage strip that goes down to where Old 99 used to cross under. Much of it is effectively unusable, but Joe Gannon mandated that I purchase it if I wanted the 22 good acres. And so we anticipate parking down there for the businesses across the street. And then, once you get past Charlie Bird's old house, it really becomes too narrow to be of any economic or sort of, any use for the business. It gets down to like, you know, less than 100 foot across for, for, for a rather long stretch. If you look at the parcel map, it gets down to a, a triangle point. And the southern end of that is where I was requested and, and offered for the city to put a new sign. So it's basically the frontage strip between Blackbeet Drive and I-5, as it goes from, you know, 200 and something foot across, and then it goes down to where it literally terminates, where Old 99 used to cross under the 5.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have one more question, if I can, Chair.
Go ahead.
One last thing. It's on the, it goes back, I believe, to the above the city obligation. It say, you're going to modify these fees, so are you asking to lock in to a particular tax? And that is a fee that's modified, in the existing modifying taxes that are now? Is that something that's going to lock in, that he's in, that developer or the person's locked in for 20 years at 1%, 2%? I mean, that's how I'm reading it.
Can you clarify what section that is?
It's on...
Oh, I found it.
Okay. I just don't know what exactly is that, you know, what does that mean? Is it locked in to a percentage that's the current now? Or does it go when they're up and running, if and when? It goes to what that percentage is then? Because they're not paying a whole lot now.
So this says that the cannabis business would pay all business, all fees, assessments, and taxes at the rates that are applicable when those rates are due and payable to the city. In other words, they're not locked in. They will, if they are raised, they will be raised for this business as well. So if the city pass, you know, if the city council decides to increase the business license tax from 1 to 5%, that would be, that would be applicable to this business. The last sentence of this paragraph, the developer asked to, to make sure that this was carved out, that the city won't adapt, adopt any new taxes or modify existing taxes that are basically solely applicable to this project.
No.
That is, in my opinion, unnecessary. We are already not allowed to do that for a number of reasons, namely, the equal protection clause says that we can't pick single businesses to apply taxes to. Also, taxes have to be passed by a majority of the voters, so it's infeasible. The developer asked to include that. It doesn't change the requirement that they pay taxes as those taxes are passed and due. And there's no freezing in any way.
All right. Thank you.
I have one question. Oh, I have one question, please. Why can't we vote to put this off until after the people vote in two months? Since it's on our, we're voting on whether we want cannabis and weed or not. The people are. Why don't we let the people decide? Why don't we do what they want, and let's see what they vote? Just we represent the people here, not us.
That's a policy question for the city council. I don't have any further, you know, that's not a legal issue, I suppose.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question in regards to, Commissioner Mizouni had made comments about the, you know, basically, we're doing like a special process here for this business. In the past, has the city of Weed done anything similar to this for other business developments or any, like, cities in the county, like in the area? Is this, is this like a new thing that we're exploring here? Is this something that's been done before in the past?
I don't, I, I don't know of any time in the recent past. I've been involved in the city since about 2014, and development agreement hasn't been... Oh, well, there was one, but it wasn't necessarily this type of one. We did an agreement for the Conference Center, if you remember that.
Right.
Right. That wasn't this type of a development agreement. This one's actually a little more official. And as far as following the rules go, well, this is part of the toolset that's available to developers and cities to provide these kind of consistent assurances for long-term development. So it is in the government code, and we also do it with an ordinance.
But this has never been done before.
Did Lowe's ask for a development agreement?
Lowe's?
Lowe's did not ask for...
You mean Loves?
I mean Loves.
Okay. No, no. It's really up to the developer. Now, if a developer had something like a three or four phased, you know, subdivision or even a mall, you know, like something, like kind of big, you know, this is kind of a, it's a multi-phase project. This is when they're, they're appropriate because a developer needs assurances that while they're getting financing, this, the, a jurisdiction isn't going to just change the rules out from under, under them, and all of a sudden, one day, say, oh, by the way, we don't like your, your project anymore. We have a new council, and all that, all that stuff they agreed to before is, we're going to pull the plug on it. Well, this is an agreement to permit...
Plus, Loves is probably corporate-funded within their own organization, whereas this project is...
Well, that's, that one, to tell you the truth, Loves was a use permit and design review, I believe, so those run with the land as well. You know, once you get your use permit, you, whatever you agreed to in the conditions of approval, those... You know, once you get your use permit, you, whatever you agreed to in the conditions of approval, those run with the land. And, and any, any modifications thereof have to be done on a public hearing. And I might add, you can get a use permit for a Loves, and Loves could sell it without building it. So that's not a big faux pas either, um, that happens. The rules run with the land, not with the person.
Plus, obviously, they have a certain amount of time to start their project, which they're waiting on.
Well, that's actually not true either. I mean, the, a lot of cities used to have these automatic, uh, explo, uh, like, if you don't do this within a year, your use permit is automatically expired. Well, the courts found out, or found that that's not true. You can't have automatic, you know, expiration. You can bring them in to revoke the, the use permit, but you can't just have it automatically expire. So those time limits on use permits don't, don't hold water either. Um, that's about it. But, no, we've never had, I've never done a development agreement, even in my twenty years of, uh, working. The only thing I know about them is that they're passed like an ordinance, and whatever I said in the staff report last night.
It's a learning curve.
Yes.
Can I add two points?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
So first, this is becoming more common with cannabis in particular, because it has happened numerous times, or several times at least in the state, where there have been large investments in cannabis businesses, and then the winds change, and, um, councils or boards of, you know, county boards decide to, to ban cannabis altogether. Um, it's much easier to do that for cannabis, uh, than other business activities, because there's an express, you know, state requirement that we can say no to cannabis at all throughout the city. Um, so that's one point. But the second is, I believe, the beginning of, or this project started as a development agreement at the direction or request of the former city manager. Uh, I was not involved in that process, and have not been involved until, until recently, so I'm, I'm not sure, and I'm sure the applicant can confirm. But I do believe it was the former city manager's suggestion that we move forward with a development agreement.
Okay.
And so Keith, uh, and again, I apologize if I'm harping on something else here, but, um, my understanding is that this, this resolution, you know, goes to council. If it is approved, um, there's no breaking of ground. This just says that you can submit for the conditional use permits and the EIR, and all the things that have to be reviewed and approved
Yeah.
by the planning commission and by the city council and/or in the future.
Right, that's true. This is just an agreement to pretty much allow the applicant the space and time to have the right to apply for those discretionary actions under the terms of this agreement. And some of those terms have a time limit. Um, and also, essentially, we have to do a PUD, which will be, uh, subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. And a PUD is another zoning change. It's basically a giant project. Uh, planned unit development is a zoning code adoption as well. So we'll be back here with hearings to approve a, uh, planned unit development, and also, most likely, an environmental impact report. And then, yeah, this is just to basically agree to the terms of this agreement. We're not approving a project of, of physical development at this time at all.
And I've, I've heard comments from fellow commissioners, as well as from letters received from, uh, citizens about a vote in November. I'm not aware of any ballot measures. How does that affect this? And, and if so, what is that that's been mentioned?
Well, here's what I know about the background of that, and I will, um, refer to the outside counsel after this. April, um, I forgot which year was that last, no, it was probably, uh, two thousand, well, it was April of either last year, two thousand nineteen, or the year before. Um, the, the city council did adopt a, a set of rules for cannabis cultivation in, within the city limits. It was subject to a referendum. So there was a petition floated around that gathered enough signatures to put it on the ballot in November for the citizens to vote on that ordinance.
I'm sorry, I missed something. So, in two months, the people of Weed vote whether they want cannabis in greenhouses, on the ground, or otherwise in this town.
Mm-hmm.
So let's make it simple. The people are voting whether they want to bring cannabis into the city of Weed. So again, why don't we wait for the vote?
That's really not up to me, and also, and also, one more thing about these, they do supersede zoning, um, codes. So, if, if we waited, he could still submit a development agreement for it.
That's correct. But if we pass it now, and the people vote not to put cannabis in Weed, we still have to okay it, correct?
You have to okay the planned unit development. He gets to apply for the planned unit development.
Yeah, whether the people want it or not, why wouldn't we wait to find out? Why wouldn't we care?
We can't answer that question here. That would be something to bring before the city council, I would think. You could have brought that up on Wednesday.
The council is the legislative body, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And so I guess the, the last question I have is, is, is there any liability for the city, um, you know, i- if things change, right? If the county board of supervisors makes a change, the city of California makes a change, you know, how, how does that impact the city of Weed?
Excuse me, that I would not know, that when you mentioned the word liability, um, I really don't know. I think we have a very talented attorney on the screen there. Can you, can you help with that one, Ryan?
As far as the county goes, there's pretty much nothing the county would do that would affect what the, what the city does in its own territory. The only thing I can think of would be if the county decided to, I don't know, pay cannabis developers to go to their county instead of the city, then we might, you know, no longer have this potential project in our, in the city's jurisdiction. But that's a policy issue, not a, not a, um, legal or liability issue. If the state determines that cannabis is not allowed anywhere in the state, for example, or that they're not, or that for some reason the project as envisioned by the applicant is not, um, not allowed under, you know, they passed regulations or whatever it is, there's no, again, no liability for the city. The city has made this agreement contingent on a number of things. Uh, state law in any event supersedes local law, uh, and local agreements, so we would just by, you know, by preemption be, uh, not permitted anymore, and it would not be the city's fault. And finally, the agreement, the, the applicant expressly, um, indemnifies the city and holds the city harmless for anything like that. Um, and this, the, I guess, in short, the city is not going to be liable. Even if this development agreement was challenged in some way, the developer indemnifies the city, um, for any challenge to the agreement.
Is that in writing somewhere, or is that somewhere on here? Okay, can you study some more on that?
So regardless of how it shakes out, no one's gonna come back and sue the taxpayers, and the taxpayers aren't gonna have to pay out good, bad, or indifferent.
Not through the county, I don't see it, it's comes through the city.
Okay, any more questions?
I'm good right now.
That's everything I've got so far.
Free your time.
Well, since we met last month and already voted on the development agreement, and tonight is really just to vote in the amendments of the development commi, agreement. Since last meeting was open to public comment on this issue, and also, the city council meeting, the last city council meeting was open to public comment, I will not open this meeting to public comment.
I would recommend having public comment, uh, just to, to make sure that, you know, that the review and recommendation is, you know, is full, I suppose. Uh, it, it's ultimately your decision, but typically, this, at this stage, we would allow public comment.
We've already had two meetings with public comment. Isn't that enough?
Again, typically, we allow public comment. I suppose, um, I don't, I can't see the room, I'm not sure what the public comment looks like.
Ryan, this is, this is Sandy, excuse me. Can she open it up to any new comments not previously brought up at the past two meetings? I believe what she's trying to avoid is, is reiterating everything that's already been discussed.
I would recommend limiting to modifications to the development agreement, so that the comments would only be on these changes, rather than on, uh, the substance of the agreement or pros and cons of the agreement. Um, that's the intent of this meeting.
Exactly.
I, I would like to hear public comment on the modification part.
That, that seems fair. I think, I think that makes sense to me. So I will open the meeting up to public comment, but only on the amendments that are being worked on tonight. Not, not the development agreement, which we voted on last month. Um, to start, I would like Mr. Strack to have his chance to speak, and then we will take any other public comment. We will, there will be no crosstalk. There will be a time, a three-minute timer on, so that if you come up, the buzzer will go off and you're done. So, uh, hello, Mr. Strack.
Hello, Chair Zinda. Um, so I guess, uh, may I ask, just before I begin, is it appropriate or prudent for me to respond to some of these questions that were brought up that Mr. Reed was unable to answer?
Yes.
Okay. So, one thing that's very important to note about the vote in November very specifically, that referendum is specifically against indoor cultivation. That is to say, if the referendum were to pass, the city council will be mandated to revise the ordinance to expressly disallow indoor cultivation. The reason that this development agreement is not beholden to that is because it is not indoor cultivation. And so the way that the, uh, advocate for that referendum, wrote that referendum, it is very specifically only against indoor cultivation, and that argument was made for ecological, sustainable and electrical consumption reasons. Uh, it's also worth noting that we have ran all the water and sewer numbers by the, uh, by Public Works Director Craig Sharp, and they have been found to be quite sufficient, uh, or quite within range for the, uh, infrastructure in South Weed. And we actually ran the numbers for a larger project by Bradley Robinson, our journeyman estimator here from Pacific Power, based out of Yarica, when we were looking at that Back Ninety parcel, which we now hope to be a Phase Two, God willing, in the years to come, um, if we ma, if we do our job right. And, uh, on a project approximately three-point-five X of what we're talking about, he said absolutely no problem. So it is worth noting that way before this project got to this level of review, we had run those numbers by not only our city public works department, but by our utility company as well. As far as the specific amendments, I, if there's any more questions as to where that land is or why I wanted it included, allow me to elucidate slightly. When we discussed with the city where we wanted to put greenhouses, it was decided that, for a variety of reasons, including space, including proximity to the highway, that that frontage strip was not an appropriate place to put greenhouses, and we were fine with that. What happened was, there was some miscommunication and a lack of understanding that ancillary components to what is at the state level called a cultivation site plan, as innocuous as material storage, parking, uh, employee break rooms, things of this nature, have to be tied to a permit. And so if those APNs were not tied to the permits on the actual twenty acres or eighteen acres of greenhouse development, we would not be able to utilize that land even for ancillary uses. And it's called out very specifically in the exhibits that we can only provide ancillary services on those parcels, and that is called out in the government code, what those are comprised of. It is not anything to do with cultivation of cannabis, it is literally support room for employees and material storage. Um, as far as the shift in city obligations, I think that it's important to note that, as Commissioner Mazzoni pointed out, um, you know, the city is obliged to allow me to pursue the business operations after the vesting date. However, it is also very important to note that the subsequent sentence, uh, says very clearly that the ci, city retains discretion over discretionary actions contemplated by this agreement, including but not limited to the approval of the zoning amendment and certification of the EIR completed by the developer.
Time's up.
Sure. So, in terms of that, um, you know, I'm not exactly sure how the red line looks as far as you guys, but if there are any other sections that you want me to speak to, but Ryan is correct, the rest of the majority of the revisions were sort of legalese, uh, crafting of more specific indemnity language, which city manager Rundell wanted to see. And, um, I, I think that was pretty much it, to be quite frank. I, I would like to, Chair Zinda, if you do not mind, the discretionary action timeline that Keith brought up. We do not have twenty-five years to build this. If we build it within three years, as per the terms of the agreement, we have up to twen, the rest of the twenty-five-year term to run the business. So we can't just sit on our hands like Frontgate did with the housing development. You know, the city learned its lessons through that, and so that's why we're obliged to make moves within a one-year period to finalize the acquisition of the land, and within two years to complete SEQA. And as you know, SEQA can be something that goes, I was told, as I said, anywhere from six to eighteen months.
Keep it short, you're already over time.
No problem. And then, I mean, if you'd like to speak about the logic on the development agreement that was former city manager Stock's idea, it was actually a mechanism by which to minimize city staff time, because for a project this size that did not have an overarching development agreement, I would have been back in front of you guys and taking up city staff time consistently, every couple of months, every time we wanted to build a new building. And it was deemed that this was a more economically efficient model for the city as far as its staff time. So, if you have any other questions for me, you know where to find me. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Want to ask him one?
Yes.
Who's filing out to you?
Us, our company.
Who's us?
That, that's not really an appropriate question, Commissioner Palmer. It, it is not, it is not.
Nobody is.
That's untrue as well. We have several interested parties, we're under nondisclosures with those parties, but it is our company, the Chastity Jefferson Growth Businesses, which will intake the funds through a partial equity sale and potentially take on debt mechanism through a banking, through a banking institution.
No, thank you very much, you answered my question.
I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't have this much money in my pocket, I promise, I wish, that'd be nice.
Didn't think so.
Would anyone like to make comment about the modifications discussed tonight?
Yes, he, he, Ray Strack addressed the, um, the referendum.
What is your name?
Maryland Blanconship, fourteen-sixty North Davis Avenue, Weed.
Thank you.
Um, being as he addressed that, the referendum did include indoor grow, commercial or otherwise. And so, I would like to wait until the vote of the people. I'm with Brian, so.
And this is not something we can decide? This is something to take before the city council?
I know it is, but being as he said it, I'd just like to clarify.
It is not germane to the modifications we are speaking of tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not parallel.
That's rude.
He talked over, way over three minutes.
She was passing.
That's the problem.
It's his project, I gave him some extra time. It's my decision to make.
It is your decision?
Okay, no, it's fine.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Robert K., three-oh-seven Jackson Street. Um, from everything that I've seen, I wasn't able to make it to previous meetings because of working and stuff. Um, I don't see anything that will deter from the quality of weed if you guys do approve it. I'm coming from, I own multiple rentals, and I get approached every year by multiple vacation rental companies. With current wages, uh, I won't be able to continue renting my rentals where locals will be able to afford it. And I see down there, it's not our tourist area. No tourist comes to town to go to South Weed. They go there to get a cheap burger, to fill up the semi, to do, to stop in, get right back onto I-5. These people are gonna be using a section of property that has been virtually abandoned for years. We shut down the road back there because people are dumping it, because there's nothing going on there. And the city, and the people did vote to tax grows back in two thousand eighteen, June, which I voted for on Measure K and stuff. So my thing is, if we don't allow industries to come in, landlords like me, I will turn all six of my, I'll have, be forced to turn all six of my rentals into vacation rentals, because I can make two to three thousand dollars a month per rental. Right now, I'm renting them out between five hundred and nine hundred a month, so our locals can survive.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do you have a comment about the modifications that?
I see, I see nothing wrong, and I vote, if I had a say in it, I'd say approve it. None of that land back there is going to be used for much of anything else, and these people have a, a use for it. We're turning down big things, and I see nothing wrong with the amendments or allowing this gentleman to put the business in and moving forward for the greater good of our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please try and stay with the comments on the modifications. All right. Um, that seems to be it. Um, so at this point, I guess, do any of my fellow commissioners have any statement or, that they wish to make about this? Keep it short.
Well, three minutes, maybe a little more?
Yeah.
The, um, well, let's get it out there. But anyway. But anyway, no, I just want to say that what I see here, my advice would be to the City Council, take a hard look at this again, and make sure this is what you want to do with some different amendments in them. That's about what I'm saying. And again, I'm not against the marijuana industry. I'm against it being in the city of this, should be something out in the county. But I don't agree with some of these amendments, I just don't. I think that, I think it's stacked against it.
Thank you.
So I have a question. So, last month, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 2 to not adopt the resolution. How does that function for us to adopt amendments to a resolution that wasn't adopted by the Planning Commission? Shouldn't we be revoting for the adoption before we, for the resolution itself? Before, how does that, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, like, how does that work?
That's a good point.
I want to just want to make sure that whatever we do, good, better, and different, is correct.
From what I understand, from last month's meeting, we voted against adopting the development agreement. And because of all the comments that came up, there were amendments made, modifications made to the development agreement to try and address everything that came up in the last meeting, which of course, changes the development agreement.
Right.
That thing goes before the City Council. This, we just made a recommendation last month, we didn't vote for or against necessarily, we made a recommendation that we voted against it. So now, we have to approve the amendments, the modifications, to add on to that, we've already voted, but we do need to vote for the modifications.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was clear on my understanding.
That's what I understand, it is kind of convoluted. Am I correct, Ryan? Anyone else?
One comment, South Weed is not dying. Since I was out there on my own property, you have a pilot, you have McDonald's, you have Burger Kings, you have motels, you have, shopping has gone in. Things have developed over the last 15 years, and that's the way it should be. I'm sorry, putting cannabis in South Weed is silly. Have a good day. I'm done.
From what I see, this project is not a retail establishment, it is not open to whoever off the street. It is a enclosed, private, well-guarded manufacturing plant. South Weed is zoned commercial. No, well, it's, whatever, it's appropriate.
It's...
It's an appropriate business.
Just for clarification, it's zoned CM, which is your light manufacturing.
Light manufacturing, okay. I stand corrected, I sit corrected. The kind of scope and vision that is included in this project is exactly what we need in this town. The job creation, the branding. If we don't start making some kind of income off our brand, it's already happening, and we're not getting anything back from it. We might as well make it a business. It's already happening, weed is already a brand that we're giving away for free. Let's contain that. If this business has our name as part of their brand, then hopefully that will protect us from anybody else commercializing on it. So, I'm, I mean, I want to see this vision, I want to see them try and make this happen. And I have no problem expressing that. So, at this point, we would make a vote on the modifications to the resolution? Right. So this is the Resolution 022020? And that is tonight, not just, okay. Does anybody want to make that call? I'll take care of it. Okay.
I recommend we don't. That's easy.
I, let's see. I vote to...
Could you make a recommendation? Excuse me.
I mean, I recommend a vote on the Resolution Number 02-2020. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Weed, recommending that the City Council approve modifications to the proposed development agreement between the City of Weed and Shasta-Jefferson Growth Businesses Incorporated. Does anyone second that?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, vote A.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Opposed.
Okay, we have 2 to 2.
The motion fails because of a tie, basically, so it's...
The vote has failed because of a tie. All right. That's it for the first agenda item. We will go on to the modification of site plan for the liquor warehouse.
You're still there.
Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan, have a good one. This is a modification to a previously approved project. If you remember right, this project was approved on appeal by the City Council in late 2019. The City Council modified the design of the building and approved the project as the site plan was submitted. Since then, through investigation by project engineers and proponents, it was discovered that the original parking layout could not be constructed as approved due to an easement between the pilot property and the subject property. In response, the applicant is submitting the revised site plan that's attached. This is a use-by-right business in this commercial zone, and the structure had been approved via Section 18.24.040 of the municipal code. This is considered a minor change in the layout of the parking. It is not expressly connected to the aesthetics of the structure. The Planning Commission is to ensure that the parking required is still up to the standards set forth in the municipal code. Some codes, you know, have these minor adjustments that staff can actually approve. It's usually something about a percentage of dimensions or placement of a certain structure. This one, though, is a little bit beyond that, because we're kind of moving a bunch of parking spaces, and one of the standards of approving these types of designs is that the condition is usually placed that the building and all the site will be constructed as submitted and approved, or, and then as used, as the municipal code provides, and sometimes municipal codes do provide slight changes. We don't have that, and this is also just a little bit farther away from that kind of approval. So, basically, since we're talking about the parking, I'm going to say the parking requirements for the land use are met. For example, the attached floor plan indicates, well, the floor plan indicates that the entire building is approximately 7,000 square feet of gross floor area. The requirement is for the usable floor area, and the floor plan showed approximately 5,690 square feet of usable floor area. Therefore, we had a requirement of 29 spaces. And of those 29, two were to be ADA compliant. The parking is still met with this new, this moving of the parking lot. Please note, same thing I was going to say last time, that the amount of off-street parking we require for parking rarely gets fully used at a rate of one space per 200 square feet. We don't consider gross floor area, so luckily, we do the usable sales area. So, the applicant has submitted a subsequent hot site plan. I've attached the previously approved plan and the new plan. Essentially, what it is, is the property between, between pilot and the site is actually an easement that can't be used by the applicant or by pilot. So, that's why we had to make this change. And if you have any really, any other questions about the change, the applicant's designer is in the audience, and he'll be able to take questions. This project was found to be exempt from SEQA as an infill development, and staff recommends that the new parking scenario both solves the issue with the encroachment and provides the required parking. So, that's my staff report.
Do we have a proponent who cares to come forward and talk about this project?
My name is Kurt Reichel, I'm from Mount Shasta. Any questions that you have, I'd certainly be glad to answer. I think we kind of reviewed everything substantially when we went through everything previous. So we're just looking to move the project forward.
Does anyone have a question? What is your, what is your name again?
Kurt Reichel.
Okay. Does that...
You represent?
I represent Cliff Chang, yes.
The other city people already passed this. City Council already passed this.
I know.
Yeah, they did it on appeal. The applicant appealed your decision from that day, and here we are.
In the course of doing the improvement plans for the parking lot, we discovered some things that we're unaware of when we previously did it. So it forced us to adjust the parking a little bit, that's simply all it is.
So, if I remember rightly, we voted against this in the Planning Commission, and it was approved by the City Council on appeal.
On appeal, yes, and they modified the design of the building as well.
Are we required to vote on this right now, or is this just recording this appeal?
No, this is, you're voting on this modification. I mean, if you deny it, he can appeal it again, so, you know, that's kind of how that goes.
It's just parking, right?
It's just the parking.
It's just parking.
It's basically area allocation is all it is.
I have nothing, sure.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. Is there any public comment regarding this? No? I guess we're ready to, do you want to...
I move that we adopt the modification of the site plan for the parking changes.
I'll second that one.
I'll turn it.
You second it? I move to vote on the modification of the site plan for Liquor Warehouse, 1888 Black Butte Drive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor.
We pass them.
There you go.
See, we can get along.
Thank you, Kurt. All right.
And that's it.
We have one more. We have a commercial fence permit.
Okay. This one here is another one that you've already approved, in a way. And this project was a request for a, to construct a wire link, also known as hog panel and barbed wire fence around a mobile truck repair service at 600 North Weed Boulevard. If you remember right, we had a use permit for this project and a design review, I think it was in 2018 or early 19, I forgot. Okay, the site is zoned C2 in the municipal code, and has a commercial land use designation in the general plan, similar. The C2 zoning is serviced commercial. This was a use permit that was approved in November of 2018, and at that time, I want to note that no fence was approved, proposed, nor was it discussed or even brought up. Staff does believe that this fence is kind of a prominent design feature of the site, and is more of an attribute of the overall design of the site, other than just an after-approval accessory. I just kind of want to, want to remind us that we did go back and forth about the use of the parking lot and the aesthetics of the site, and I think we almost got to take this, this project kind of in context with what you guys already discussed and went The site is large, and the structure is placed on the north end of the site. The open areas on the site were specifically for short-term parking of trucks that need to have an extra stayover while the vehicles were being repaired. The Planning Commission was focused on the appearance and potential for blight as a result of, basically, you didn't want to have a boneyard, if I remember right, kind of that kind of effect, you know? It's kind of a prominent spot coming off the freeway. There is no actual development nearby that, that really sets the tone for the area, and that's kind of why it was, it was found, that it would be an appropriate spot for the business itself. Now, on the site plan of the conditional use permit and design review, it was indicated and discussed that parking was to be on the south end of that proposed use. Parking was needed because of additional vehicle space needed. Now, we have a site plan that seems to add a few things to that. The site plan before you has an addition of possible parking, it's not parking anymore, and has added a possible storage. Now, that's, there's something, I just want to talk about that, because the self-storage was not included in the 2018 use permit, but has been subsequently discussed with the applicants. The applicants approached the city to see if that was required, what was required to put in personal storage. Well, as it turns out, personal storage does have its own, personal self-storage has its own section, and that is a use permit, but only allowed in the CM zone. So, this is C2, can't have a storage unit there, so we got to just kind of not worry about that site plan that says, I just want to, for the record, because it could be evidence brought up later, that we don't, that's, that's an erroneous thing on the site plan that says possible storage area.
So that is something that's not going to happen without going back to the city and getting permission.
Like a, probably a rezoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not even the right zone.
So, plus, think about this, self-storage does require a solid fence and landscaping to hide a storage unit, a storage, you know, the self-storage areas, because they're highly secure, you need good lighting, you need solid fence, according to our municipal code. So, if we could just block out that self-storage and think of this fence in terms of the fence ordinance, and perhaps what you might have wanted when you did the design review in the first place, that would be my, the way I would approach this. So, the proposed fence is a wire web link hog panel fence at six feet in height, but with that, according to the applicant's photographs, appears to be an additional foot of barbed wire or razor wire on top. The photo shows square woven fence similar to agricultural fence. The gate also has barbed or razor wire that's pictured in the, in there. There are many, many issues to discuss with this fence and permit request. Let's look at the municipal code. I bolded out some of the parts of design that shall not exceed six feet in height from original grade, as measured from grade at any point along either side of the fence. Fences or other structures exceeding the allowable height to enclose tennis courts or to address unusual privacy requirements may be erected only upon obtaining the use permit, therefore, upon finding that the use does not adversely affect public safety, patrol, or access capabilities. So we can discuss this in those terms, you know, the fence does exceed the height, but that's typically okay if we have a use permit sort of situation, and that's kind of what this is. So, allowable materials. Well, we went through this, if you remember right, in 2017 or 18, when we were dealing with fences, we people were putting up fences made out of corrugated tin, so we decided that, okay, we will allow, because we know that people are inventing new ways to do fences at all times, so we changed our laws to consider alternative materials for fencing. So, so we did define what our allowable materials are, and we do allow coated or non-coated chain link fence where line of sight is compromised pursuant to Subject C of Section 16.40.020. And that is basically on your corner lots where line of sight is not possible. So, however... So, however, there is a potential remedy. There is a section for special review of alternative fencing. Fence proposals with materials not listed can be reviewed by the planning commission. They can be approved, must be supported by the following findings. The fence will not create a safety hazard to person, property, or vehicular traffic. Appearance of the fence or wall is compatible with design and appearance of other existing buildings in the area. It's a planned architectural feature to avoid dominating the site. All sorts of findings here, and I don't, I don't think that actually any of these apply. As a matter of fact, I would have to say that having the razor wire and barbed wire along the whole top and very accessible at the front gate may not be safe. If you guys have looked at the staff report and can make these findings, I would say that you can go ahead and do that.
So, isn't that the purpose of Constantina wires, to be unsafe to people that would trespass on your property?
Right. Yes. Right. But when we have it in a, in a commercial zone where we do consider aesthetics, that's kind of an issue. I'm sure that, like around, I think we've allowed him around things on the Roseburg property just recently, we had.
Could you speak into the microphone?
I am, I'm sorry. Well, I'd still like to get through the facts here. We do have a use permit and design review were approved that did not include the fence, as we know. The fence is proposed, oh wait, I already went through that one, my apologies. The applicant has occupied the building and he did not complete the approved design. There is an architectural feature that was required around the foot of the building that has yet to be completed. The city, in good faith, issued the certificate of occupancy with the promise that he would very soon complete those construction.
How long ago was that?
Well, we were here in, I believe in November. And so, sometime during 2019, we got a building permit and the occupancy was, was granted. The wire link fence has an additional foot plus of barbed wire or razor wire as shown in the photographic materials. The gate also has barbed wire. Applicants have inquired about self-storage on site, were informed that it is not allowed, yet they have it listed as a possible future site. The use permit approval did not, not discuss fencing. I really think that anytime, any, before we issue any more permits on that property, that the applicant needs to finish the use permit that, or the conditions of approval on the design that he still has to do. So, CEQA, if we do approve this fence, it would be exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15303 of the CEQA guidelines, small construction fences, signs.
So, Keith, what, what improvements are still left undone in that property?
Some, wainscoting around the bottom is an architectural feature.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It was a condition of approval. Usually when you guys put conditions of approval on a project, they get done. But we, we've been working with the applicant and just allowed him to move in before he completed that. So, it was kind of the city's good faith effort, I would say. Anyway, so, look at the findings you have to make and if you guys think you can make those findings, or if you can modify the fencing to suit your needs to make those findings, you can go ahead and approve the fence. That's my, that's my recommendation and adopt a notice of exemption.
Can we hear from the proponent of the project?
I was going to have my daughter talk here, but I think I should probably do that. I'm Jeremy Pearson.
Natasha Pearson.
We're Family Truck Repair here at 600 North Weed Boulevard. And the last stipulation in the, sorry, I'm getting a little frustrated here. The last stipulation about making the shop look pretty, the last three foot around the building was supposed to be cedar, like fencing that we recycled from the shop property, from the cedar trees on the property that you guys allowed us to cut down so we could put some parking in and get in there. Cal Fire walked up to the shop and when we were cutting down the trees and he asked me what my next step was in the shop and, well, we're going to do cedar fencing, you know, cedar planks around the shop about this high, all the way around. And he said, well, the second you do that, I'm going to find you for putting flammable products on the side of your shop. So, that's why we don't have the aesthetics done there to finish. We just now got the well in, we got water, so our toilet does work. We're not moved in by any means. There has been no customers inside the shop. There's only been my children and my wife. We have had a few trucks in there, our loyal customers dropped their truck off. I've worked on it out front a little bit, but nothing that keeps us actually in, moved in there. We're baby stepping it, we're doing all the work ourselves, basically. We can't put up a six-foot chain link fence with four kids in our budget. I would like to do five-foot some kind of hog paneling or fencing with two rows of barbed wire across the top. I can't afford big time razor wire, but when people from Motel Six are smoking methamphetamine in the front of the shop at five o'clock in the morning, I feel like I should at least be able to ruin their pants if they jump my fence. Obviously, I'm not allowed to run out there like a bouncer, like I was bred for, for the last forty, four years. But apparently to the city of weed, I have to call them and ask them for their help now. So, I'd prefer to put up some kind of a fence with maybe a little bit of a deterrent. Obviously, my wife was talking about if a kid walked down the side of the highway, which is the highway, and they were doing this and they, because we're farmers that pay our bills to mechanic, so I wanted to do like five wire barbed wire for our cattle. But my wife said, if your daughter walks by and catches her pants on the barbed wire, somebody could sue us. So, I was thinking five wire, I mean, you know, five-foot hog paneling where close enough gaps where nobody could put their foot in there and just jump right over my fence real easy. We did build the gates, the boys welded them up and they look pretty nice for mechanics doing it. I would like to raise the height a little bit, maybe with just some posts and a little bit of barbed wire across the top. I'm just trying to keep honest people honest. Obviously, if somebody wants to jump my fence and break into my shop and steal my stuff, they're going to do it anyways, whether it's.
They cut it.
Yeah, you know, so, I'd prefer not to put, I had basic fencing come out, give me a quote, $20,000 for a fence. I got like four. You know, I'm trying to start this business, keep rolling, we've been doing good, trying to help good people, keep our family together, keep the kids safe. I don't know what more I can say about that, if this is at all relative.
What, tell me more about the problems you're having on the property that you feel will require this fence.
Oh, man, you know what? I've put up no trespassing signs, I've put up, please don't let your dog poop on my property from Motel Six. They keep telling everybody that they can walk their dogs on my property when Motel Six owners are walking their dog and leaving debris on my property. Apparently, it's not legal for me to grab a shovel and give it back to them. We've had a few, more than a few confrontations with people tell me that their dog poop is not their effing problem and I should just deal with it. Now, the parking, we were talking about the storage in the back, you were talking about that. I totally wanted to have big rigs just roll right in there through Caltrans and we could all work together. Apparently JP and family are doing too good. So, Caltrans put 90,000 pounds of K-rail blocking me off of my own property and then I had to ask for the driveway. So, we're just trying to figure out something to do with that back chunk of property that could help the community. Obviously, I'm not going to be putting in no big pot garden. I think we should all vote. I think we should all vote on that. Go Trump. However you say it. I hope I can vote. I hope my mail-in ballot makes it. We're just trying to better my family's future and we thought maybe the kids could run a little storage facility over there, maybe one of them could live in it, whoop, whoop, however it works.
There's just a possibility.
It's just, I'm just dreaming, I have big dreams and little wallet. I'd appreciate some kind of a security fence, whatever you guys allow me to do, obviously it's what I'm going to do. But I would like to try to keep those people from, I don't think it's okay to tell my children that you're allowed to smoke methamphetamine at five o'clock in the morning in front of the family truck repair business. I don't think we should be able to put in 200 pot plants over there by any means. Kids are driving buses, riding the bus, hopefully soon, someday these kids will be back to school. I am very fortunate that my kids get to go out with me on the side of the road and fix trucks and kind of be somewhat regular in all this time. But we've had major problems with transits from Motel Six, or maybe not transits, but people that are living in there and then coming over there. Yeah, you know, they're allowed to come onto my property, but I can't follow them home. Another one of those questions, probably for later. But if you guys could help me keep these people off my property, that's where I'm at with a, some kind of a protective fence, like I said, five-foot hog panel or cattle fencing with two rows of barbed wire, one right across the top and then one maybe a foot up.
Or maybe straight wire.
You know. However, but we're going to be family truck repair out there doing it on our own with, you know, post hole diggers and try to make it as professional looking as possible, for sure.
So, Mr. Pearson, I've driven past your property five, six days a week, sometimes seven days a week for the better part of 20 years commuting to our factory in Wryka. And I have seen on multiple occasions at all times of day and night driving through there, people on your property trespassing, you know. I don't know how long you've owned it, but as long as I can remember being in weed, I've seen people hanging out there. You have every right to be secure in your person and effects, every American does. I've seen the Caltrans mess and I've seen the, the photos that were provided here by the staff as well as out, you know, riding my motorcycle through the county, I've seen those on farms. I think it looks a hell of a lot nicer than the K-rails and piles of debris that the state has piled against your, your property. And I'm really sorry to hear that Cal Fire is the one threatening and, you know, keeping you from finishing this project. I think that's something that, you know, should be discussed with the city. If you're being under threat of compulsion by a state agency, you know, that, that's outside of your, your control. And I'm disappointed to hear that, you know, someone who's worked in volunteer fire for the better part of 15 years.
He just advised me that I would be getting, you know, a fine if I put cedar boards, you know, aesthetic boards up against the side of my shop.
Right. And, and I would encourage you highly to, you know, look into that because you have an approved plan from the city that calls for that. And so, on one hand, the city's trying to compel you to do this as per your original plan. On the other hand, the state is threatening you to compel you not to. And that's a conflict that, you know, is beyond my purview to make a judgment on, but I would advise you to continue pursuing, pursuing that to get that resolved. You know, I'm, I think everybody here knows how I stand on property rights. And I would move to adopt this, this motion to move forward with this fence. You know, and I support that 100%.
I agree. Things are getting worse, not better. More people coming from states where marijuana's illegal, you know it, because we made it legal here, they're coming in for grows. We got them living in the creek, we got them by race entry. Hell, that one from Indiana was race entry.
I've had lots of offers on my property to.
I know. If we did, the cartel wants in weed.
And I can't tell my kids that's all right, you know?
It is. You have to build your fence and a turret with a 50 caliber.
And so, as far as the cedar goes, I know you guys give me the okay and want something aesthetic along that side of that building. Can I?
Does it have to be wood?
That's what it was.
I mean, the thing is, it could be wood appearing, like, I remember this when we were, it was getting, we were asking for something like split rock or something, but then you said something about wood, like wainscoting kind of thing. And we said, that sounds good. Now, there's all sorts of ways to do that without it being wood. Yeah, so.
I highly recommend hardy plank.
Let's just try a different material, but just the same idea, you know?
That's what we were told, we got the well in and the water's working and we won't go through that long story there. But if I could put planter boxes across that wall there, nice cedar planter boxes with plants, you know?
Well, they sell that in stores, so I don't know how that's against the, I would talk to somebody prior to not putting that cedar up because they told you that you can't have that.
I think that's kind of, I don't think that's right. I don't think that they can do that. We approved like some sort of thing that looks, they approved, I didn't.
Okay.
It looked like wainscoting, so it's like up about three feet. If it's wood, that's the question, then just make it something that's not wood. You know, they have all sorts of decking material nowadays that are, that is not made of wood.
There's also hardy plank, which has a wood grain on it.
That's what I mean.
And I have that on my building and 10 years down the road, it looks brand new.
I think the issue here is that they were planning on recycling their own property to save costs.
That's exactly.
Because we're, we're baby stepping this. I understand, you know, I don't have 25 years to, to build the business, you know, this, this way, I'm trying to get baby steps. And the last thing I am trying to do is get so far in the hole that I can't dig my way out of it. I prefer to be able to put a fence up before I did the, and I.
That was just my suggestion, it's up to them, you know that. Because we just need to have some sort of time when, when you, when you say you're going to do something by a certain time, like usually it's before we finalize the building. I don't know, I'm just a planner. Well, that's kind of how it should be. Now, we go ahead and let that happen without and now it's like an issue. So, it really, you know, we really, if you want to come back with a new design and propose it to them, otherwise I think you should take some of these suggestions like hardy board or some sign of non-wood material and just get it, get it up there. Because you said you were going to do it. It doesn't have to be your wood. I don't think they care what the material is. It's about, when you do a design review, it's about aesthetics.
I think we have another public comment.
I have questions. Did the fire chief approve the building with the cedar?
I don't know.
Doesn't the fire chief have to approve building plans?
It had to go in front of you guys, didn't it?
No.
This didn't go in front of?
No, I don't know what, to tell you the truth, I'm not, not.
I thought the fire chief had to.
It's the building inspector.
And the plans said it was the recycled cedar.
Not at the architectural, at the architectural review phase, but when he submits his plans, that's when the fire chief looks at those.
And he saw that?
We don't know.
I don't know, I'd have to.
You have to ask the chief.
We don't know.
I think we're going down a rabbit hole in splitting frog ears here myself.
Put up fence with barbed wire.
Madam Chair, I believe, I believe Commissioner Parham made a motion.
I made a motion to accept the fence as presented for immediate construction.
I have not made my comments.
We still have to kind of, if you don't mind.
I'm not finished.
Just to, just, just, we still have to kind of orientate our comments towards the findings you're supposed to make.
Right.
So, are you making those findings? I mean.
Okay. I drove through there and stopped and looked for a long time at your property and everything surrounding it. It bothers me that the last thing you see leaving town on the north end and the first thing you see coming in will be razor wire and a fence. It looks like a prison yard, it'll look like a prison yard or something. I'm, and I have trouble because I really respect your need to be secure. Okay, so it's, it's a difficult decision for me because I'm weighing, you know, we're supposed to talk about aesthetics and, and all of that. And, you know, to me, your cedar planking will disappear behind razor wire. And if somebody wants to get in there, they're going to climb that fence, no problem at all, put a piece of canvas over the razor wire and they're in. As far as dogs walking across and defecating on your property, they do that on my property all the time, I hate it. I'm on Main Street, I'm one of the few green spots for blocks. I'm constantly cleaning that up. That's just the price you pay for living in this world, I think. But I don't see any of that fencing anywhere else there. And so, it has to be transparent, you cannot do anything to obscure the view. It has to be six feet tall, not seven feet tall, because it's a little confusing in here. It says six-foot fence with another extra foot of razor wire in one place and then it goes on to a total of six feet, but I believe the code is six feet. I just, I wish it could be a nicer fence, but at the same time, it's a truck repair yard. So, I'm constantly balancing these two things. I think that. I think that you need to finish that siding, figure out if you're gonna fight to get the, to use the cedar or go to another material. Obviously, the storage space is something for another time, that's not something that's approved, it wasn't in the original plans. I'm gonna go ahead and, and vote positively for your fence because I want to see you succeed, and I want you to be secure, but I'm really disappointed that we have to do that. Unfortunately, circumstances seem to dictate security, and I'm, I'm, my feeling is, anybody who really wants to get in there is gonna get in there, and you're gonna have problems with the back towards the freeway being cut and things like that, so people can come in. So, I think you'd be better off with cameras.
We already got cameras, that's how we got the dude on camera smoking.
Right.
Five in the morning. So, all that has totally been given to the city of Weed already, we have it on our phones, all that stuff, and we're trying to keep positive about all that. I, I understand too, I don't feel like we should have to protect our shop with a $15,000 fence by any means, but just like you said, anybody who wants to get in there, we're gonna try to keep it as aesthetically pleasing as possible, I don't want my place to look-
It's a cattle fence with razor wire, it's never gonna be aesthetically pleasing.
It's beautiful to me, though, I love my cattle, I love my, I love my horse fences, I, I, I think it looks beautiful, barnwood red, but everybody's entitled to their opinion, that's why we're all gonna vote here soon.
All right. That's my opinion.
Thank you, thank you.
If you don't mind, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mark.
I was just gonna, no, I, I agree you should be secure, I, I 100% agree. I'm kind of with Commissioner on that, that the razor wire might be a little, little much, but you did say you could put something very small on the very top, you know?
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna use the razor wire, like, I'm talking barbed wire.
Right.
You know, two rows of barbed wire. One on, of my fence, my fence will be five foot, there will be one row across the top of the five-foot fence, and then one a foot above, so my total fence height will be six feet.
Well, I see a lot where they have it kind of at that angle, makes it hard.
The whole property is like that, so depending on if you're standing on the dirt side, the high side, it could be, but I will do our best to keep it aesthetically-
No, and I'm saying, no, like if you see on the freeway sometime, and, and they have at the top at an angle, so it's harder where you climb, you're gonna cut, you're gonna cut yourself.
I, I'll be in an argument, I'm sure, with Caltrans about the fence in the back, because I'm not supposed to touch that, or do anything-
Well, I was gonna ask you that, but that's a different issue on the property lines.
I can hang a sign on there, any, anything, they just cut it down.
Right, but I agree that you need, you need to at least feel secure with it, and I would make it as nice as I could, I would, just my suggestion is finish the project that you started, however you need to do it. You know, with, get with the city minister, administrator, I mean, whoever we need to get with to get you going on this, but I'll, I'll approve it with some amendments to it. I'm good with it.
Does, does anyone else in the audience have a comment about regarding this? I move to approve the commercial fence permit with the, for 600 North Weed Boulevard, with the stipulations that it is not to be more than six feet tall, it is always to be transparent, and that you have to finish the project you started at the same time. Is that enough? Is that it?
To make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the fence.
One second.
To finish the project that you've started, and should we give them, give them a time factor on that, though? No, no time factor, that's fine.
They're having the building inspection.
Okay, that's fine. I'm good with that, I make the motion for that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
All right, where were we?
We're done.
Okay.
Hey, that was only an hour and a half.
We have a, we have approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Do we have any commissioners' reports? Okay, any, we've had our staff reports, that means the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.